Good morning. The time is now 9:32 a.m. and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of May 11th, 2021 is called to order. Due to the COVID-19 national emergency and in accordance with Public Act 254 of 2020 and Ingham County Board of Commissioners Resolution 21-219, the State Board of Education Regular and Committee of the whole meeting is being convened with remote access technology. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? Hearing none, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda and order of priority?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? And I have support. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, could you please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Tilly, I believe, is absent. She'll be joining shortly. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marilyn Snyder, our State Board Executive, whom you've just heard, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education.
I'm happy to do so. Our president is Dr. Cassandra Albridge, who resides in Dearborn. Dr. Pamela Pugh, Vice President from Saginaw. Ms. Tiffany Tilly, Secretary from Southfield. Mr. Tom McMillan, Treasurer from Oakland Township. Dr. Judith Pritchett, the Board's Association Delegate to the National Association of State Boards of Education. She's also the Board's Legislative Committee Member and she resides in Washington Township. Ms. Ellen Cogan Lipton, Chair of the Board's Legislative Committee from Huntington Woods. Ms. Nikki Snyder, SBE Legislative Committee Member from Dexter. Mr. Jason Strayhorn, SBE Legislative Committee Member from Novi. And please welcome Ms. Patty Redinger, the Governor's Director of Federal Affairs and the Acting Policy Director, and Mr. Owen Bondano, the 2021 Michigan Teacher of the Year. He teaches English Language Arts to freshmen in Oak Park Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. The next item on the agenda is educational updates related to COVID-19. As of yesterday afternoon, the number of cases worldwide of COVID-19 was more than 158 million, an increase of 22 million cases, or 16% over the 136 million cases at the time of our last board meeting just four weeks ago. The number of deaths worldwide has increased to 3.3 million, an increase of 400,000 deaths, or 14% more over the 2.9 million at the time of our last board meeting. For the United States, the number of cases has increased from more than 31 million to almost 33 million in four weeks, an increase of approximately 1.5 million cases, or roughly 5%, with the number of deaths rising from 562,000 to 582,000, or under 4% during the same time period. In Michigan, since our last board meeting, the number of cases has risen from 747,697 to 865,349, an increase of 16% in the last four weeks, with the number of deaths increasing from 16,512 to 18,239, a rise of 10%. Importantly, however, after eight weeks of increasing cases, we've had three weeks of declining cases. Since our peak three weeks ago, our weekly number of cases has dropped more than 61%. Positivity rates are down across the state. Additionally, as the governor announced yesterday, we have hit an important milestone. 55% of individuals 16 years or older have had at least one vaccination. Increasingly, it is these vaccinations that are protecting us. In the short and midterm, however, we need to keep up our mitigation efforts, including but not limited to mask wearing, social distancing, frequent hand washing, and disinfecting. Ventilation is important, as are outdoor events. Board, as you know, over the last few months, I've shared with you and with the education community some reflections about lessons learned during the pandemic and about how we might use the federal education pandemic relief funds to pivot not back to normal, but rather to a new, better normal. As we've discussed, Michigan will be receiving almost $5.8 billion expressly for public education in SER 1, 2, and 3. The dollars are nonrecurring and unevenly distributed, it's true, but they represent the greatest infusion of funding for public education in any of our careers. Given that we are a local control state in a local control country, how should our more than 800 local school districts in Michigan spend these nonrecurring funds in ways that create recurring benefit? In another word, how do we create gifts that keep on giving? At various times, I've mentioned seven broad categories of gifts that keep on giving. Nonrecurring expenditures, whose impact on children's lives continues long after the expenditures themselves. These are early childhood expansion, early literacy improvement, the improvement of health, safety, and wellness, the addressing of the teacher shortage, narrowing of the digital divide, strengthening of community partnerships, and the addition of more time. You'll notice that the first four are goal areas of our new state strategic education plan. This is not surprising. Our state strategic education plan was designed to improve achievement and life outcomes for students. I want to share a little more on three of these gifts that keep on giving, three areas for local school districts to consider as they finalize their plans for investing in improving the lives of children. First, early childhood expansion, the first goal of the state's top 10 strategic education plan. Board, as you know, our state Great Start Readiness Program is top-ranked for quality in the country. Yet Michigan is ranked 21st in access to preschool. Why? Because we provide GSRP preschool for 37,000 of the 64,000 eligible four-year-old students each year. Many districts are receiving substantial federal pandemic relief dollars and can afford to fund preschool for all eligible students in their community. They should do so. To expand preschool with federal SER dollars now will help tens of thousands of Michigan students in the coming few years. This is an investment supported by research dating back to the 1960s. Local school districts are used to receiving slots for preschool allocated by the state legislature. In other words, they typically don't spend a lot of time determining how many preschool students they will serve. They simply serve based on the slots that they receive through the state budget. This year, though, federal funds, 90% of which are distributed to local districts based on the Title I Part A funding formula, are available to expand preschool. Districts have an unusual opportunity to expand preschool and should take it. Preschool is a gift that keeps on giving. Second, health, safety, and wellness, the third goal of the state's top 10 strategic education plan. Replacing outdated heating and ventilation with new HVAC systems can not only create greater air exchange, but also better climate control, both in the summer and in the winter. This is both a health benefit and a pedagogical benefit as local school districts reflect upon what the best calendars are to educate children in the coming years. A new HVAC system is a gift that keeps on giving, as are windows that open and close as needed. Additionally, local school districts need to expand professional development in social and emotional learning. For many districts across the state, this was the first year in this area. Districts should train staffs annually in SEL. Finally, it's important to expand annual professional development in children's mental health. Trauma-informed care, anxiety, and depression, signs of suicide, and implicit bias training. While all staff members need to be knowledgeable in these areas, we need to train and hire more staff members who regularly work in the area of children's mental health, including social workers, nurses, counselors, and school psychologists. All of these are health, safety, and wellness gifts that keep on giving. Third, addressing of the teacher shortage, the seventh goal of the state's strategic education plan. It will take us several years to rebuild the teaching profession. That said, we know what we need to do. Districts need to start or to expand Grow Your Own programs for support staff members interested in becoming teachers. We aren't who we are, or who we're capable of becoming. I remember a second shift custodian in my former, former district in New Jersey who became an elementary teacher. I remember a bus driver in my former district here in Michigan who became an elementary teacher. We need to encourage, incentivize, and mentor support staff members, many of whom have strong relationships with children and need us to help pave and pave the way to their success in teaching. Districts need to start and expand Grow Your Own programs for students as well. The department began this year to help districts stand up these programs, which won't have an immediate effect on the profession, but will have a significant effect down the line. Districts need to pay teachers more, particularly those at the beginning of their careers. Beginning teacher salaries are a barrier to consideration of the field as a career. Additionally, we need to provide teachers with regular opportunities to provide feedback and input into school direction, opportunities to use their professional voices. Finally, we need to remove barriers to recertification for those who have previously been certificated, have left the profession, and have traditionally viewed the 150 hours of continuing education to get recertified as a barrier to reentry to the profession. Two weeks ago, Board, as you're well aware, we not only reduced or eliminated these barriers to teachers who have let their certifications lapse and have left the profession, but we also began outreach to many of them to let them know of the change. Good news. Two weeks later, more than 1,000 formerly certificated teachers have indicated to MDA, MDE, an interest in recertification given the reduced barrier to reentry into the profession. To regain trained individuals into the profession has the potential to be a big boost for Michigan public education in the coming months. I have lots more on this subject, Board, but next week at our work session, we're going to reflect upon these and other efforts of ours to address the teacher shortage in greater detail. Not to lose the theme, a new teacher, or a teacher returning to the profession is a gift that keeps on giving. Unfinished legislative work. At your last board meeting, you passed a resolution board that urged the legislature to immediately set aside all state accountability measures associated with state testing this year, as the U.S. Department of Education did in approving our federal accountability waivers. Specifically, you urged the legislature to set aside this year, number one, third grade retentions; number two, the inclusion of state test results in educator evaluations; and number three, the running of the A-through-F accountability system. Though bills have been introduced on the first two of these three areas, the legislature has passed no legislation to address any of these issues, let alone all of them. A number of our state education organizations agree with our position, including most recently the Michigan PTA, which came out strongly against retentions for this year and urged the legislature to act immediately. Absent legislative action, parents of students who have scored particularly low on M-Step are going to begin to receive letters in the coming weeks regarding retention in a year when some students have not been able to physically be in a school building. We continue to urge the legislature to do the right thing on these issues. Today's agenda, Board. In addition to the report from our Michigan Teacher of the Year, Mr. Owen Bondano, and Region 7 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Liz Honeissette, as well as our legislative update, our agenda includes presentations on partnership districts, on our fourth state strategic education plan goal, the expansion and improvement of our state's secondary education programs, CTE, AP, IB, early middle college, dual enrollment, and special education transition services programs, and on Easter seal services to children in schools. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. Looking in the chat, I'm seeing a little pre-meeting chat. Doesn't appear to be an interest in speaking or asking a question. Sometimes it takes us a little time to get warmed up. So on the issue of recertification, we reached out to 36,000 individuals whose certification had lapsed. We indicated that the recertification barriers around 150 continuing education hours were going to either be waived or reduced, depending upon the years of experience of teachers and the number of years since the teacher's certification had lapsed. And it was from that pool that we got more than 1,000 expressions of interest in two weeks to consider recertification. Most of those, more than 1,000 interested parties, have shared that we can give their contact information to districts in their areas for the possibility of matchmaking, if you will. That's a big deal because the process by which we are doing this, this administrative rule waiver, requires that it is the district that asks for the waiver. It is not a blanket waiver. It is the district that asks for the waiver. And we've indicated that we will be providing the waiver under particular conditions for teachers with particular amounts of experience and a particular length of time from which they had their certification lapse. So the connection of teachers or formerly certificated teachers with school districts is important in this effort. Recognize that at any given moment, we may have more than 80,000 teachers teaching our children in a given day. So to have 1,000 express an interest in returning to the profession has the potential to make an impact for us in the state. Any questions on anything that I said? If not, we are going to pivot to our next agenda item. Okay, very good. Next agenda item is the presentation on partnership districts. This is a presentation on the ongoing efforts to support partnership districts. It is an informal presentation and does not require board action. The presenter today is Ms. Gloria Chapman, the Interim Director of the Office of Partnership Districts. Dr. William Pearson will not be with us today due to a family emergency. There will be a PowerPoint presentation for us by Ms. Chapman. Ms. Chapman, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning to everyone, all the board members. It is my pleasure to meet with you on behalf of Dr. Pearson and myself and the Office of Partnership Districts. Okay. Today's presentation will include a brief overview of the partnership district model, an overview of supports for partnership districts during a pandemic, state funding to support partnership districts, also referred to as 21H funds, partnership districts' benchmarks and goals, and the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. The partnership model was created in 2017 under the leadership of the late Superintendent Brian Winston. Each partnership district developed a partnership agreement in collaboration with MDE, the ISD, or authorizer, and community partners. The Office of Partnership District provides timely and targeted comprehensive support to the lowest-performing districts and schools in Michigan. Our mission is to reduce barriers and identify appropriate resources to help expedite the district's academic achievement of all students. The Office of Partnership Districts is comprised of two units. Our first unit is the Partnership Agreement Liaison, or PAL. Each partnership district is assigned a partnership agreement liaison to remove barriers, improve communication, and identify appropriate resources. They serve as navigators, neutral facilitators, and are the partnership district's point of contact. Our second unit is the Accountability Research and Evaluation Unit. This unit develops and implements the accountability systems aligned with appropriate legislation and MDE policy. This unit leads the review of goal attainment, evaluation of partnership agreement process, and the accountability process for Section 21H funding. The Office of Partnership District serves 27 districts and 99 schools. At the beginning of the pandemic, partnership agreement liaisons collaborated with their districts and the Office of Health and Nutrition Services to ensure that students received meals during the pandemic. Partnership districts identified this as their most pressing need at the onset of the pandemic. This was followed by technology equipment, hotspots, and professional development needed for virtual learning. Resources were also identified to address the social, emotional learning needs. The Office of Partnership Districts cross-office collaboration consists of the following: regular meetings with multi-tiered systems of support, regional consultants, ongoing collaboration with the statewide field team, collaboration with the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process Team to develop guidelines for all components aligned to partnership agreement goals. Partnership agreement liaisons ensure that districts see the connections between the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process Goals, the partnership agreement goals, and our state strategic education plan. The partnership agreement liaisons are also working closely with the districts regarding use of their elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, or SER funds. Other areas of cross-office collaboration includes ongoing collaboration with the implementation of the early warning intervention monitoring systems at the secondary level and using data to guide improvement of both academic and social-emotional needs, literacy teams, curriculum and instruction support, technical assistance grant, Section 31A, and all other special populations. Partnership agreement liaisons have worked over the years on building positive relationships between MDE, OPD, and their partnership districts. The Section 21H funds are designated annually through the state budget process. Partnership districts are eligible for funding and may apply for funds on an annual basis. allowable use of funds include professional development for teachers, district, or school leadership, increased instructional time, for example, funding the after-school tutorial programs for students, teacher mentors, and other expenditures that directly impact student achievement, for example, technology equipment, funding literacy coaches, and intervention specialists. During the pandemic fiscal years 2020 and 2021, partnership district top three requests for 21H fundings were for technology, social, emotional learning, and literacy. An example of technology and supplies include the hiring of a professional development technology designers to develop training and support materials for teachers, students, and families. This person provides online and professional development for teachers to improve remote learning capabilities. Social-emotional learning examples include hiring a social-emotional learning interventionist to provide students with supports on the five core competencies of social-emotional learning, and the hiring of social workers to lead and support building-wide implementation of restorative practices and the early warning intervention model system. Finally, literacy expenditures examples include purchasing culturally and relevant texts and resources to support student engagement and address variances in student reading levels, and the hiring of K-8 literacy coaches. All partnership agreements include 18-month benchmarks and 36-month goals. The review of goal attainment is a formal process occurring at the halfway point of the partnership agreement. The review of goal attainment consists of three phases and is a collaborative process. In Phase 1, evidence to support benchmark and goal attainment is submitted to the Office of Partnership Districts. Phase 2 is the actual onsite or virtual meeting. It consists of review of goal attainment, protocol overview, district presentation, and a collaborative conversation between the district, the district's ISD, the district's community partners, and MDE. Finally, Phase 3 is the status determination. Districts determined to be off-track require a review of goal attainment structured conference six months later. Here are some samples of process and local benchmarks that were taken from current partnership agreements. The process benchmarks, the first one, provide ongoing professional development regarding positive behavior intervention support and restorative practices. A second one provides professional development to ensure that teachers and support staff are using NWEA data to improve student achievement. In a local benchmark, 50% of all students building-wide will meet their growth target as evidenced by NWEA MAPS Growth Assessment for Reading. Here are samples taken from current partnership agreements of 36-month goals. The first one, the proficiency percent met for English Language Arts will increase by 4%, or the proficiency percent met for mathematics will increase by 6% as measured by M-Step. Another 36-month goal, 90% of staff will implement the MTSS best practice protocols and procedures aligned to meet the academic and non-academic needs of all students by the 36-month evaluation of partnership agreement as measured by the MTSS team's reflection tools. The evaluation of partnership agreement, or the EPA, is the final analysis of the entire partnership agreement. The Office of Partnership Districts met with 26 partnership districts to conduct their review of goal attainment using each district's process and local benchmarks during the winter-spring of 2020. Five districts were identified as off-track from the review of goal attainments conducted. The five off-track districts are American International Academy, Baldwin Community Schools, Joy Preparatory Academy, McComb Montessori, and Oakland County Academy of Media and Technology. The first column of the chart lists the number of schools identified in the partnership agreement and the number of schools in the district. The second column provides the number of process and local benchmarks attained. Finally, the ability of the Office of Partnership Districts to use the 18-month goals as defined in the current partnership agreements has been compromised due to the ongoing pandemic and the inconsistent modality of student instruction the past year and a half. Therefore, the Office of Partnership District needs to modify the process used with the five districts identified as being off-track. Rather than engaging in a second formal review of goal attainment, each of these five districts will be asked to address the following three questions in preparation for what we are calling an informal pandemic review. Question 1, how has the district improved process benchmarks not achieved by the 18-month RGA? Question 2, how is the district meeting its extended continuity of learning plan goals? And question 3, how will the district's plan meet the 36-month partnership agreement goals? And what are the challenges due to the pandemic? As districts share their responses to these three guiding questions, it will help the Office of Partnership Districts determine resources and supports needed to achieve their 36-month goals. The district responds to these three informal pandemic review questions and will provide evidence that it is working to meet its 36-month goals. We are elated about this next step. For recently, four partnership districts were identified as grant recipients of the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant. The four recipients partnership districts are Detroit Public Schools Community District, Flint Community Schools, Muskegon Heights Public School Academy, and Pontiac School District. As these districts focus over the next five years on developing a comprehensive birth-through-grade-12 literacy system, they will work closely with MDE, including the partnership liaisons who already know the districts very well. The collaborative effort between the Michigan literacy team and the partnership liaisons is already underway and will help guide the districts towards success. The Michigan literacy team has invited partnership agreement liaisons to attend the one-on-one meetings with their districts. Information provided to districts has been clear and concise, which is creating a no-stress zone for the districts and a collaborative effort among all involved. Recently, Detroit Public Schools Community District requested their partnership agreement liaison join their district-level team, and she has been meeting with them regularly in addition to the Michigan literacy team meetings. The Michigan literacy team and the Office of Partnership Districts are establishing regular meetings for next year. Our goal is to ensure that all partnership agreement liaisons are knowledgeable about the resources and strategies used by the grant recipients. We want to be able to share best practices with all of our partnership districts. Our annual spring networking event will be held on May 19. This event is based on surveys the Office of Partnership Districts received from the May 2020 networking event. Partnership districts requested more information on addressing the social emotional needs of students and staff. Dr. Steve Goodman, Director of Michigan Multi-Tierred Systems Technical Assistance Center, will present return, restart, and recovery, addressing educational needs within our cultural norm. Participants will engage in a breakout session to share their district-building best practices and expand on Dr. Goodman's presentation. Facilitators for the breakout sessions include Ira Neta Rice, Deputy Superintendent from Detroit Public Schools Community District, Muskegon Heights Public Schools, and the Saginaw Intermediate School District. Currently, we have over 110 participants registered for this event. I'd like to thank you for your time. And Dr. Rice, I will turn this back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman, for that very thorough presentation. We appreciate it. Just a word of amplification relative to the federal literacy grant. That federal literacy grant provided the state in a competitive grant process with $16 million over five years. We were to designate five local school districts with which to work, and we chose the applications of the five districts that Ms. Chapman showed in her presentation, including four partnership districts, which she named, and Benton Harbor Area Schools as well, which is not, as the board knows, a partnership district. We did so because we wanted to work in these very important communities across the state. We wanted to lean into them and to support them and partner with them when it came to literacy. We believe that literacy is foundational. We believe that this adds another area of strength and benefit to the partnership model, a model which was already strong. And we feel that the work that we do in collaboration with these five will serve as a model for other districts, as Ms. Chapman noted, both within partnership district status and beyond in the state as we learn different lessons. So thank you, Ms. Chapman, for that. Yes, you will be able to get a copy of the PowerPoint, absolutely, President Albrecht. And if you are good, Ms. Chapman promises to sign it. The, Dr. Pritchett, a question?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chapman, for the presentation. The 21H money, I understand. I am wondering if you could address the Regional Assistance Grant and how that works with the partnership districts? As far as what kind of support the Regional Assistance Grant provides to those partnership districts and to those subsequent ISDs?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Pritchett. I would be happy to answer that question, follow up with you, do a little bit more additional research on that, and I will be happy to provide an answer for that, for your question.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Lipton, a question slash comment?
Thank you so much. That was a wonderful presentation. And this is particularly exciting to me. This particular model is something that I investigated when I was in the legislature. And as I'm sure you're aware, there was a very different model that was being circulated, not just in Michigan, but in many other states at the time, which would involve the state identifying districts and then sort of taking them over, a very top-down approach. And so I worked very hard, and I'm just so thrilled that the partnership model was implemented by the department. And so my question, that was sort of my comment, that it's really just a tremendous pleasure to see it actually in the flesh, if you will, and actually working. My question is somewhat specific in terms of when you designate these PALS, are they coming from the community? Designated from the department, from the ISD? Who are these individuals, if you will? And what sort of training background are you identifying? It strikes me that, as you suggested, they're acting sort of as mediators. Oftentimes, there are different groups that have to be brought together in order for this partnership model to really be robust. So I'm just curious, what sort of identification mechanisms are used to identify these individuals?
Okay, great question. The partnership agreement liaisons are hired. They're part of the Michigan Department of Education. Their title, I guess, civil service title is more of an educational consultant. All of them have several years of experience working as principals, some sort of administrator. So they are thoroughly immersed in the educational background. What we try to do is to ensure that our PALS, once assigned to a particular district or districts, in order to build relationships, I think you talked about the partnership model as a whole. One of the things that we try to do is make sure that we give a good fit. And so when we're looking at partnerships districts, we're looking at the skill set that the PALS bring to the table and trying to make sure that that's going to be a good fit for that particular district. Because what we want to do, one, is make sure that we're building really good, positive relationships, establishing trust. And we want to also ensure that the PALS assigned are PALS that, you know, they will be with them through this 36-month period. So we want to have that sense of continuity. So we're very intentional about the placement of the PALS.
And just to follow up, if I may, any thought about training in dispute resolution or mediation techniques? Or have you found that to be not necessary? I'm just curious, because just in my experience, I observe that sometimes the impediments are more, I mean, certainly relationship, but also sort of getting disparate groups that don't necessarily talk to each other to talk to each other. I'm just curious if that is something that is thought of, or if it's not, if it's contemplated in terms of specific technique?
Yeah, so one of the things that we focused on is relationship and team building. And so the PALS, I'm trying to think of, you know, all the different skills. That would be the biggest one, because when they're working with the partnership district, they're establishing a new team. And that's when they become the facilitators in working through those things. We have not done anything in addition in terms of conflict resolution. That has not been something that we've identified as a concern. But more focused, more intentional focus on what does an effective team look like? What are the components that you need to establish? And what does that relationship building need to be?
Fabulous. Thank you so much. And I just, like I said, I am a huge fan of this model. And it's certainly, I think, the best way to go. So thank you so much.
And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh, to you.
Good morning, and thank you for the presentation and all the hard work that you and the team are doing there at the department, as well as you, Dr. Rice, on this effort. And I, too, with Ellen, we worked very hard to make sure that this was a mechanism for our schools to get on track. We know that a lot of the issues that we're seeing are decades of issues, decades of inadequate funding and so many other things that just the infrastructure that was not there for our schools, and a crisis that has long existed. And I guess my question is, having this mechanism in place, do you feel that it has provided that vessel or put something already in place that now we're going through this crisis? That it was there? That you had this infrastructure to be able to plug into? I saw where you were talking about the social emotional support, some of the things that we've long known needed to be addressed in our school system. Just wanting to know that, you know, how that has played out in the crisis. I'm thinking that that may have been a benefit that we went this route and we have this mechanism in place. And then the next question, you talked about the networking events, and I'm thinking about Dr. Rice's previous presentation that he just provided and some of the gifts that keep on giving. You know, is this an opportunity for us to plug in and be able to give some thoughts, even more in-depth thoughts, on how we can make these tangible opportunities for these districts that, again, have so long needed these things to be addressed? But now with this crisis, it's just broadened. But we know that in these concentrated areas, it's going to be even more needed. And with the funding that is coming down, we want it to be something that can go into the future. That, you know, we're thinking future as I think we have been through this model.
Yeah, so I'm going to start with the second question first. So the big piece, Dr. Rice mentioned it earlier, was about literacy and continues to be. And so this model has been very helpful because we were able to directly be more hands-on in terms of resolving some of the issues that districts had by having a person via the PAL be that contact person, being able to say, if you have an issue, you have a question or whatever, we were able to connect them with the various people within the MDE department. So a lot of times what we had heard previously is like, you know, I've got to call one person, and that's not the right person. Then I've got to spend time to call another person to call another person. So our focus was really call the PAL, send an email, and then that PAL will do whatever legwork. When you make the one phone call, they're done. Because we want their focus to be on what needs to take place within their building, within their district. The teacher recruitment and retention has been a huge issue for partnership districts. They will do the provide professional development for their staff, and then the next year have a large number of staff members leave to take other better-paying jobs. And now they're left trying to fill that position once again. So it was about the continuity. So being very intentional, what we're doing, what we're seeing, the things that are happening within the department in terms of being able to recruit teachers is key in order for our districts to be able to make the necessary gains. So the PAL support that's provided reaches across all offices within MDE. And again, that has been very helpful because they have 36 months to work on showing improvement. We want them to be successful, but we don't want them to spend time on things that they don't need to. We want them in the classrooms. We want them in their buildings. And so that's support, no matter what it is. When the pandemic hit, we stepped back and we asked. You know, the PALS were intentional about asking, what is it that you need? And the first thing they said, we've got to figure out a way that we can feed our children. You know, nothing else matters at this point other than making sure our children get fed. And so that was our focus, to work with OHS and finding out, how does this work for us? You know, here are some things, here are some of the barriers. Sometimes what people thought might be a help actually didn't work in a particular district. So we were able to be more intentional and be more supportive. So the meals that went out, we knew that they were getting where they needed to get. And that's what we want to see in terms of partnership districts. We didn't want to create that. The technology then became our next step. And so it's not just about getting the equipment. We had to get the equipment, and we also had to ensure that we had hotspots. And then it wasn't about just getting the equipment and the hotspots. For some of our students, it was about, how do you even work the equipment? Because for some of the students in some of these areas, some of these spaces, that was something that they didn't have access to. So there were a lot of, I won't call them little things, because they were big things when you look at a partnership district versus a more affluent district, you know, where you have laptops in the home. And after the laptops were given to students, after the hotspots were established and connections, then we realized that we had another issue. And the next issue was, now we've got to work on the repair or replacement of laptops. Because when you think about children, children drop laptops. So there were other things that maybe in a wealthier district may not have been as pressing, but we had to go back and look at the training of what needed to take place, because parents needed training on how I work with and use technology within the home. So overall, we're a small staff, but I think it's a great staff. I'm a little bit prejudiced here. But they have developed great relationships with their districts. They are advocates for their districts. And that's the kind of person that we look for to fulfill these roles, because you have to be. And in that, they are able to help support their districts in ways that are crucial in order for them to make next steps and gains. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Chapman, Ms. Tilly, a question to you.
Good morning. Thank you so much for your report. I'm really happy to hear the support that you guys were able to give to these districts as far as food and technology during the pandemic. I know that you stated that funding was given towards literacy programs and tutorial programs. Wondering if those things happened during the pandemic? And if so, and because I know students definitely need that type of support even more so right now, if they can get it. But if if you guys were able to get any of those up and running, what do they look like and how are they working?
So I want to be clear, I'm answering your question correctly. So the question is regarding literacy and the programs that the twenty one age funding was used for?
During the presentation, you specified that there was funding going towards tutorial programs. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, the after school, yes, okay. So I would have to, because each school is very individual and not all schools used it. But I can do a little research in terms of the twenty seven districts. And I can give you a much more defined answer and response to your question in terms of what some of those after school programs look like. But for the most part, some of them were data based, based on where they saw student needs were. So for example, in literacy, struggling students, they would identify a group and then provide some sort of after school tutorial support for them. But I will follow up with you in terms of some additional examples of what that actually looked like across our partnership districts.
Awesome, I'm really curious to know how that went, you know, i- in the midst of the pandemic. And I know that, you know, a lot of us are concerned about students, you know, having to to study from home. And and not getting the full amount of services that they normally get. So that there, you know, some of them are are behind because of the pandemic. So we were already behind, but now we're some of us are even more behind. So just curious to find out how it's operating. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pugh and then Mr. Strayhorn.
I'm sorry, I'll let Mr. Strayhorn go ahead.
Mr. Strayhorn for a first bite and then back to Dr. Pugh for a second.
I know, it was a fantastic presentation, Ms. Chapman, that was a that was excellent. I do applaud your efforts, what's going on in the department. I had a simple question, I hear there's twenty seven districts, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you have twenty seven pals?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
About that. In a perfect world, we'd like to have.
Okay, yeah, so because I know we have challenges with teacher recruitment, you know, statewide, nationwide rather. But are you finding that, you know, you have a strong amount of talent available for these pals?
Yes, we do have a a strong amount of talent. We have a person who I will say is an expert in in special ed. We have another person who has a lot of extensive background in career technical education. So we cover all of those areas. So we do, we do have a very, very, but very expert, I want to say, level of expertise within our partnership agreement liaisons. The other thing, just oops, I just lost it. That's that's my senior moment there. Oh, your question about the pals, twenty seven districts. We do not have a pal assigned for for each individual district because it it looks very different. So for example, Detroit, being the largest school district, has about fifty six schools. But we have one pal only assigned to work for Detroit. So that pal does not cover a caseload of any other districts because just of the sheer size of Detroit and all the things that it has going on. But all the pals maintain a caseload.
Do you think that that is adequate for a district the size of Detroit? One pal?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is, it is because of of the role that that pal plays. So remember what our focus is, we are, we are also, we're connecting. Yes, right, right. And so we're able to, so if it's an E L issue, if it's a special ed issue, then we are able to utilize that person to connect. They just need to make the one call to the one pal in Detroit. And then that pal is responsible for navigating whatever is needed and and working through that end.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strayhorn. Dr. Pugh, back to you.
I think you began began to delve into the question or the area that I wanted to pick up on. Because partnership districts were created to be just that partnerships. And so we've talked a lot about the pal. But how are these school districts really being encircled by community and by partners? And how are we making sure that we're strengthening those partnerships? And making sure that they're growing and that they're healthy partnerships? And I'll just say this is, that's a concern on a good day. But now, Dr. Rice talked about five point eight billion dollars that are coming to districts. And we know that you'll have people coming from all different directions now that want to be partners.
Right.
And may not necessarily be healthy. But we also know that we need diverse partnerships in a time like this. So what what are thoughts on that on a good day, but then also in this in this world that we live in now?
Okay, so part of the partnership agreement development encourages the district to identify partners, community partners. And so in some cases, and again, I'll use Detroit, they have umpteen different partners. Then you 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 narrow it down and you get to schools. And then the schools have their their partners. And then in some cases, we had districts that had partners, but they weren't really sure what the role of the partner was. It was a partnership that, you know, it's just been ongoing, right? So the partnership agreement and the development of it was basically, let's take a look at the partners. Let's look at your comprehensive needs assessment. Let's come, you know, let's narrow the focus down. So we clearly identify what are the needs of your district, what are the needs of of a of a school? Through that work, the partners, the community partners are invited. Pals, depending on the needs of the district, they will either meet with them quarterly, weekly, monthly, biweekly. And the pandemic has just kind of elevated that that arena in terms of, you know, the needs and how frequently. And it's at those meetings when the partners come together, where they talk about, here's the partnership agreement, here are our goals, this is what we're working on. One of the things that we've also been very intentional about is ensuring that, and I guess we want to use the word protective in a sense, because we don't want the partnership districts, because of the pandemics, going off in a lot of different areas. So it's okay, so you have your a plan here, you have something else that you've been asked to do here. How does that relate to the goals? Because we want to keep them on track with what they're doing. And so the community partners, when we do the review of goal attainment at the eighteen month, community partners are invited, they sit, they listen, they are part of that discussion. So everyone is an intentional effort to make sure that we're building upon that and that everyone is involved in moving forward with this. They aren't left out of the of the of the scope of the work that that's going forward. And it's even, like you said, even more important, given the pandemic and the things that are needed by our students.
Just just to note that the the power of the partners at the table is palpable. The the community partners sitting at the table, hearing the goals, hearing the efforts toward goal attainment, hearing what additionally needs to be done, sharing their reflections about how they can participate in helping the district move toward goal attainment for the students in that district. That's a big deal. You know, oftentimes people talk about being partners, but they don't walk the partnership. They talk it, but they don't walk it. And having them as as members at the table, signatories in many cases to the agreement, that's a big deal. People take their their signatures seriously, they take their participation seriously. It's a strong model in that in that regard. That said, I don't want to lose sight of the the challenge of certain partnerships in certain communities. You know, certain partnerships are both integral and challenging at the same time. You need them on the one hand, but they're difficult to to navigate on the other. And so sometimes we have to get involved and and have conversations about how to support a partner to support the district or to support the district to support the partner. So often, those relationships are inextricably bound, that that those those partners are really knotted. And the ability of a district to be successful is dependent upon an outside partner. You could argue that's good, you could argue it's bad. But given our historic under resourcing, and I'm not talking about the under resourcing from twenty or twenty five years ago, because one could easily make the argument that we weren't under resourced twenty or twenty five years ago. But we are under resourced today. And so those partnerships, which I refer to as a gift that keeps on giving in in my earlier presentation, those partnerships aren't add ons, they're integral to the success or or failure of a district. A district rises or falls based on those partnerships. So anyway, I appreciate you pointing those out. And I think a number of us can point to specific examples in particular communities, pull the partnership out and and really the district wobbles as a result. Ms. Snyder, to you, a question.
Yeah, I'm wondering if you can tell me more about what you mean by partnerships, talk the talk, but don't walk the walk? Can you help me understand those specifics? Instead of just saying, we need to have that conversation, let's have it. So I'm just, I would like to know what you mean specifically by that.
Yeah, so there's some, so there there are many, many partnerships that are focused on the needs of children. And it it's very clear, they get eye level with with children on their daily work. And we appreciate them. There are other partnerships or there are other partners that reach out to local school districts to inform the local school districts of what the local school districts can do for them as opposed to the other way around. And it's not uncommon for a local school superintendent to receive an outreach on twenty four or forty eight hours notice from a putative partner saying, I need a letter of support for the following grant. Well, what would the grant do? Well, the grant would 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 require the following. And so this is a grant that the partner wants to do. It's not necessarily something the local school district wants to do. It's not necessarily something that serves local public school children. But on very short notice, the local school district is supposed to jump through hoops to make this opportunity work for the putative community partner. So those, there there are some of those that exist. The majority of community partners are trying to draw a balance between supporting public schools and their and their children on the one hand, and doing things that that help continue their existence on the other. Because if you don't exist, you can't serve.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you bet. Other questions or comments? Here's phobias neuroses casting a wider net. Going once and twice and thrice. Ms. Chapman, we appreciate the presentation, thank you very much, have a great day.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you all. Bye bye.
Board, we're on to our next agenda item, which is a presentation on the top ten strategic education plan. Goal number four, to expand secondary learning opportunities for all students. This monthly presentation on the top ten strategic education plan will highlight the goal to expand secondary learning opportunities for all students and will include data associated with the goal. Following the presentation, we will engage in further conversation with the board about the efforts to expand secondary learning opportunities for all learners in Michigan. This is an informational presentation and does not require board action. The presenters are Ms. Sheila Alice, Chief Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Brian Piles, Director of the Office of Career and Technical Education, Ms. Terry Rink, the Director of the Office of Special Education, and Ms. Victor, Mr. Victor Buggne, Special Assistant to the Deputy Superintendent of the Division of Educator, Student and School Supports. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome. I I am delighted to turn it over to you since apparently I am having trouble speaking my native tongue today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rice, and good morning, everyone. Today's top ten strategic education plan presentation is the eighth and the final in this year's series of presentations on the goals and metrics included in Michigan's Strategic Education Plan. We have four presenters this morning, as Dr. Rice mentioned, and each of us appreciate the opportunity to continue the series of presentations to the State Board of Ed. The eight goals in Michigan's Strategic Education Plan are listed on this slide. Today's presentation, as Dr. Rice mentioned, will focus on the fourth goal, expand secondary learning opportunities for all students. With today's presentation, we will have presented the metrics on all eight goals included in our state's plan. Within the top ten strategic education plan, the metrics selected for this goal are listed on four slides. The metrics support student participation and engagement in career technical education programs, early middle college programs, advanced placement programs, international baccalaureate programs, dual enrollment programs, and transition programs for youth ages sixteen and above with an individualized education program or I E P. We will present data for the metrics of the programs that I just listed, except for two metrics. The number and percent of C T E students who received a credential and the number of students earning credit for I V tests, because the data for these two metrics are not currently available. Today's metrics presentation is a good news story about the increase in student enrollment in secondary programs. You are going to see increases in student enrollment over and over again as the data are presented. We are so very pleased with the progress that we've made. But because we are committed to continuous improvement, we will continue to work to increase our enrollment numbers in these programs because of their benefit to our students. Following the data presentation for each program, we will share some of the many efforts which M D E is leading that are having a positive influence on that program. And so now I'd like to introduce Dr. Brian Pyle, Director of the Office of Career and Technical Education to to begin today's data presentation, starting with the C T E metrics. Dr. Pyle.
Dr. Pyle.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Alice, and good morning, everyone. I'm excited to talk to you today about career and technical education. Students enrolled in state approved secondary career and technical education programs have an opportunity to acquire skills that prepare them for successful career entry, advancement and or continuing education. Each secondary state approved program is required to integrate four key components, classroom instruction, laboratory, student leadership, and work based learning. The first metric I'm going to discuss is the number and percent of students enrolled in C T E programs based on overall student population. Looking at the data from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, the total number of C T E students increased by an impressive six percent. The total number of female and male C T E students. The total number of female and male CTE students increased. The ratio of students to all students continues to steadily increase. At the department, we are pleased to see the growth in students enrolling in career and technical education programs. Moving on to student groups by race and ethnicity over the same time period, the total number of CTE students in three student groups had double-digit increases and two student groups had slight decreases. For these three student groups, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and English learners all increased. The department is excited with the increase we are seeing in our, in our CTE English learner students. The next metric is the number and percent of CTE completers based on students enrolled in CTE programs. Looking at the data from 2015 to 2019. Noted in the previous metric, the total number of CTE students enrolled increased by 6%. During the same timeframe, the total number of CTE completers has increased by an impressive 75%. The total number of female and male CTE student completers increased. We are pleased to see the growth in CTE completers over the past five years. This reflects a significant increase in the number of students prepared for entry-level employment and transition to their post-secondary program of study. Moving on to student groups by race and ethnicity over the same time period, the CTE program completers increased in all student groups with double-digit increases in three student groups and a significant triple-digit increase in four student groups. For these three student groups, two groups reflect double-digit increases and one group reflected a triple-digit increase. As you can see, our CTE English learners are not only enrolling at a higher rate, they're also completing their programs at a significantly higher rate. The next metric is number and percent of CTE students who received a high school diploma. Looking at the data from 2015 to 2019, the total number of CTE students receiving a high school diploma has increased significantly, 24%. The total number of female and male students receiving a high school diploma increased. The department is excited about the future opportunities that open to these high school CTE students who have received their high school diplomas. Moving on to student groups by race and ethnicity over the same time period, CTE students who received a high school diploma in all student groups with double-digit increases in five student groups and triple-digit increases in one student group. All three of these student groups reflect double-digit increases. Tying together our previous slides, we can see that our CTE English learners are not only enrolling at a higher rate, completing their CTE programs at a higher rate, and they've also seen an increase in the number who are receiving their high school diploma. This is great trend data for the department and for the citizens in our great state. As Ms. Alice mentioned, the data for the next metric is the number and percent of students who received a credential is not currently available. When we think about how the department supports career and technical education, we can reflect back on our state plan that, um, in the past 18 months was approved by the State Board of Education and moved forward and was approved by the federal government. As we worked on that state plan, we took a different step and we made sure that we, we worked with our post-secondary partners over at Labor and Economic Opportunity to have a real joint state plan. You may remember, if you were on the board at that time, Ms. Black Watson joined me for one of our presentations. And we carried that walk into our committees across the state as we solicited feedback from our stakeholders. You may recall that we had a total of four committees throughout the development of Perkins Five. And that valuable input has helped structure career and technical education under this current state plan. We're focused on a seamless transition from high school to college and have recently partnered with Labor and Economic Opportunity on youth apprenticeship grants that they had received from the federal government. We've also started to work to identify stackable credentials by CTE program on the areas that students can attain their high school and/or while they're in college. We worked with pathway grantees to identify some of these credentials. And just this past week, we rolled out new Perkins Five credentials for automotive, business management administration, construction trades, cosmetology, education general, electrical and power transmission, and health sciences, with more to come. We also designed new work-based learning technical assistance materials and provided workshops for teachers, really focusing this past year on helping them lead our students through COVID with virtual opportunities. But this is one of those opportunities that's going to carry on for quite some time, is it really helped us look at how we can engage more students that don't have these experiences within their own geographical region of where they live. And so that's going to be one of the post-COVID outcomes. It's really going to be positive for our CTE programs. We also implemented student-level data reporting so that teachers would have a good snapshot of where their students were each year and are we moving forward and providing more robust opportunities for our students in the area of work-based learning? Also, over the past couple of years, we have expanded the opportunities for CTE professionals to enter the teaching profession through our annual career authorization guidelines. And throughout the year, our education consultants in the Office of Current Tech Ed have conversations with school administrators on helping to identify experiences candidates have that would qualify them for the classroom. Moving on to early middle college programs. Early middle college programs begin for students in the fall of their junior year. And during the fall of their junior year, they elect to stay a 13th year of school or a fifth year of high school. A really strong commitment. When we look at the opportunities for the students in the junior year, students begin taking between three and four college courses. And then they progress to their senior year and they take between four and six college courses with the goal of them being on the college campus for their 13th year. It's a strong mentorship program that really helps our students as they transition from the secondary learning environment to the post-secondary learning environment. Some students actually complete their associate's degrees during that three-year timeframe as well. And so the opportunities for all students to succeed in EMCs exist. The next metric is number and percent of students enrolled in the CTE program. Looking at the data from 2015 to 2019, the total number of EMC students increased by an impressive 102%. The total number of female and male students increased. Moving on to student groups by race and ethnicity over the same time period, the total number of EMC students in three student groups had double-digit increases and four student groups had, had triple-digit increases. All three, um, all three of these student groups reflect significant triple-digit increases. A focus area for programs are students with barriers to post-secondary education. This data demonstrates the effectiveness of Michigan's early middle college model. The next metric is the total number and percent of students who successfully obtained their high school diploma and earned, I think I need to, thank you, sir. The next metric is the number and percent of students who successfully obtained their high school diploma and earned an EMC outcome. Looking at the data from 2015, 2019, we noted earlier that this number of students had increased by 102%. But during that same timeframe, the total number of EMC students who earned an EMC outcome increased to an impressive 158%. So we have more students enrolling, but we have even more students completing. That's really good news. The department is pleased to see the growth in students who have received their high school diploma and earned an EMC outcome. EMC outcomes include a student achieving one or more of the following: 60 transferable credits, an associate's degree, a professional certification, a MEMCA certificate, or participation in a registered apprenticeship. This growth reflects a significant increase in the number of students prepared for entry-level employment and transition to their post-program of study. The next metric is the number and percent of students who enrolled did not complete and exited to attend college or some other post-secondary education or training. Looking at the data from 2015 to 2019, the total number of EMC students who earned a high school diploma but did not receive an EMC outcome increased by 79%. Of note, the overall percentage of students who earned a high school diploma but did not receive an EMC outcome decreased by 6%. The department is pleased to see an increase in the number of students who are receiving their high school diploma and experiencing the CTE environment, EMC environment. For example, just last week, a student announced at his EMC graduation that he wasn't going to attend the final year of his EMC program as he decided to advance from an associate's degree program to a bachelor's degree program. So as we look at these numbers and we think about students that may not complete the program, they have made significant decisions in their junior and senior year that have changed their path. And that's a good thing for us here in education. MDE supports early middle colleges through a variety of strategies. We have Section 61B funding, which provides opportunities to expand CTE EMC programs. And so it also provides opportunities for expansion grants. So it provides some leadership money for districts to look at how they can grow their EMC. Our robust partnership with the Michigan Early Middle College Association, the agency that grants the MEMCA certificate I referenced, has been invaluable over the past years to our EMC providers across the state of Michigan. They provide coaching, technical assistance, and professional development. It's a professional association that is led by leaders in the EMC movement from across the state. Last year, MDE developed an electronic EMC toolkit for practitioners. So we have information readily available for these programs when they're starting up and to continue their growth. We also have an EMC Way of Work team that includes departmental staff from across offices and external stakeholders to collaborate on our data reporting needs, policy and legislative needs, and field communication. It is my pleasure to introduce our next presenter, Mr. Vic Bubny.
Thank you, Dr. Pyle, and good morning, esteemed board members. In this section of the presentation, I will review data for the advanced placement courses. Local districts may choose to offer advanced placement courses to prepare students for AP exams. Passing an AP exam with a three-year hire may lead to post-secondary credit for the student. On the next slide, we will review the number and percent of students enrolled in AP courses compared to the total population. Over the time period of 2015 to 2019, we see double-digit increases in all AP students. We noticed double-digit increases in both female and male students enrolled in AP courses also. Further, when looking at the ratio of AP students compared to all students, we have seen an annual increase of double digits. On the next slide, we will review the AP enrollment by student groups. For the same time period, the state saw a single and double-digit increases for all racial and ethnic groups identified. The next slide will continue to highlight student groups. The state experienced double-digit increases for both economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged students for the same four-year period. The next slide will show the number and the percent of tests taken and students earning credit from AP tests. This slide shows that over the years of 2015 to 2019, there has been an increase of 12% for students taking an AP exam. An important note is that students who take an AP course may or may not take the associated exam. And additionally, students who take the exam may or may not have taken the associated course. Further, students with an exam score of three or higher may potentially earn post-secondary credit based on their exam score. Data shows that Michigan students have had an increase in potential credits earned through testing by 11%. The next slide will show a breakdown by student groups. When reviewing racial and ethnic student groups, data shows single, double, and triple-digit increases for all groups except for Native American or Alaskan Native students. This group showed a 42% decrease in students taking AP exams. But please note the 108% increase in Hispanic or Latino students taking AP exam. On the next slide, I will highlight some of the efforts that MDE takes to expand secondary learning opportunities for advanced placement. The Michigan Department of Education partners with the College Board to present the College Board Opportunity Scholarship Program. Through this year, nearly 11,000 students were signed up for scholarships in early August. This includes approximately 1,900 students who were from low-income families. Because of this partnership and this program, Michigan students have earned more than $36,500 in scholarships for the class of 2021. MDE also oversees low-income reimbursement programs, which provides funds to support low-income students for offsetting part of the cost of the AP and CLEP assessments for students and families. Finally, MDE, in collaboration with College Board, this year hosted a series of webinars for districts and MDE staff on the use of the AP potential tool. This tool, tool is free to all districts and uses data from PSAT and SAT exams that can provide a district with a list of students that demonstrate potential to be successful in AP courses. The next slide moves us into the International Baccalaureate Program. Schools may become authorized by the IB programs to become an international baccalaureate world school. Upon successful completion of IB assessments, students are awarded an IB transcript. Successful completion of these programs do meet all Michigan Merit Curriculum standards for participating students. The next slide shows the metric for the number of students enrolled in IB programs. Statewide participation in IB programs have shown significant double-digit increases between the years 2015 and 2019. This is in both male and female students. The next slide will outline student groups with their participation in IB programs. When reviewing racial and ethnic student groups, data shows increases of double and triple digits for all groups over the four-year period of 2015 to 2019 for high school students. The next slide shows the data for economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged students. Over the same time period, data shows that we have had increases for both economically disadvantaged and not economically disadvantaged students enrolling into IB programs. Michigan does not currently have data showing the number of credits that are earned by students completing an IB program. Instead, upon successful completion of IB assessments, the student is awarded an IB transcript. Unlike the AP, the completion of an IB assessment does not provide a common score for which students may earn college credit at this point. The next slide will highlight efforts that MDE is taking to expand secondary opportunities for international baccalaureate participation. As with the AP programs, MDE oversees grants that are focused on providing supports to low-income students for taking IB exams. The state's contribution reduces the cost for students to $5. Additionally, using prepared reports and guidance, the department promotes innovative programming and instructional methods aligned to IB programs, which assists districts with offering these programs successfully. The next section of this presentation will focus on dual enrollment. Dual enrollment provides high school students the opportunity to enroll in post-secondary degree programs under the Post-Secondary Dual Enrollment Act. Students have the opportunity to take traditional post-secondary courses while still in high school. The next slide will show the number of students enrolled in dual enrollment courses. For the years of 2015 to 2019, there has been a 29% increase in dual enrollment participation. Dual enrollment is not reported by subgroups at this point. The next slide will show the average college credits earned in dual enrollment during high school. Students participating in dual enrollment programs may earn both high school credit and college credit concurrently. Even with the 29% growth in students enrolling, there maintains a there maintains an average of fifteen percent of credits when participating in dual enrollment. In short, more students are enrolling and maintaining the same fifteen-credit average. The next slide will outline MDE efforts to expand secondary learning opportunities for all students. MDE continues to provide encouragement, technical assistance, and supports to districts implementing dual enrollment programs. MDE supports include information on dual enrollment programs, supports around scheduling and planning, and reimbursement policy. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information. Now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Director Rink.
Good morning. The next set of metrics that we want to talk with you about this morning for students with disabilities pertains to the number and the percent of youth ages sixteen and above with an IEP who meet the necessary federal reporting requirements. There's actually two metrics that we're going to be tracking, and one has to do, our first one is a compliance metric. This one really is for districts. There is a ten-item checklist that needs to be addressed as a part of each student's individual transition plan. If districts only include nine of those ten, that results in a non-compliance. And so the standard for compliance is always a hundred percent. Back in two thousand fifteen, just over seventy-eight percent of the transition plans that were monitored had those ten items addressed in each student's plan. As you can see, as we've moved forward to our recent data from two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, almost ninety-three percent of our students have a plan that includes those ten items on the checklist. The second metric is much more complex. This one has to do with outcomes for our kids. That's kind of the proof in the pudding, so to speak. So this indicator is really talking about students who are no longer in secondary school. They had an IEP in effect at the time that they left school, and they're either enrolled in some kind of higher education or other post-secondary education or training program, or they're competitively employed or in some other kind of employment within one year of leaving school. We send out a survey to our students, and this data is collected based on those survey responses. Because the complexities of this are unique, states are allowed to determine the standard for themselves. So based on stakeholder input, the standard that was established in two thousand fifteen was seventy-two-point-five percent of kids would be able to report that one year out of school, they were either involved in some sort of training or employment opportunity. And so you can see in two thousand fifteen, just over seventy-six percent of our kids reported that they were, in fact, either in a training or an employment opportunity. And our recent data shows that in two thousand nineteen, just over seventy-eight percent of our kids reported those same things. So we're pretty excited about that, given the challenges. We expect that possibly the data may change next year, as it will for everybody. But we're really happy with the progress we've made in both of these areas. I think the part that I really, really want to share is the what is it that we do as an office to help contribute to improvement in these areas? Compliance is kind of a matter-of-fact thing. You have to either get it right or you don't. So we do a lot of trainings with ISDs and intermediate or local districts regarding this ten-item checklist. We want to make sure districts understand what that checklist means and how to use that as their planning for individual students in a transition planning process. We also have a number of recorded webinars in our Catamaran system. And we also avail ourselves to ISD and member district teams to do direct training with their staff, answer their questions, and give them some support for additional resources to be able to achieve this compliance requirement. The complex work of post-secondary outcomes really requires a much more collaborative approach. And so members of our office participate in what is called Student Outcome Resources, which is really just a collection of different organizations, councils, committees, and boards that we participate in as a way of kind of helping them understand the requirements under IDEA and how that fits in with other requirements they have as state agencies, whom many have requirements for the support of the same population of students under the developmental disabilities requirements. And so the Developmental Disabilities Council, the Michigan Council for Rehabilitation Services, the statewide Independent Living Council, the Michigan Transition Services Association Board, there's an inter-agency collaboration and some stakeholders that we work with. But all of that work is done to make sure that the students have the best support necessary for that seamless transition as they move out of the educational system and into life after school to the greatest extent possible, providing them the services necessary to give them a good launch and the support they need for additional learning or employment opportunities. Thank you. Mrs. Alice?
Thank you, Ms. Rink. Thank you, Mr. Boobney, and thank you, Dr. Piles, for the data presentation and for sharing this very good news about increases in student enrollment and student success in our secondary learning opportunities throughout the state. So, Dr. Rice, I am going to pivot the presentation to you for conversation with our state board members.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alice, Dr. Piles, Ms. Rink, Mr. Boobney. Strong presentation about strong increases in participation and success in our secondary school programming. We appreciate that good news. Dr. Ulbridge, to you.
Thank you. I agree. This was a really positive presentation. It was nice to see numbers going in the right direction, which is always exciting. I have just a couple of quick questions. One being, you know, this, this report is through two thousand nineteen, and obviously, the world changed after two thousand nineteen. So the first question is, are we going to be able to continue tracking these numbers during the twenty and twenty-one school years? Or is that going to be a challenge for us? And then the second question I had was about the AP numbers. If someone could just talk about, you know, we talked about potential credits. Can you explain how those credits work? How a student would actually get those credits? And then also, for students that are in low-income households, I understand there's a reimbursement program. What does that? Is there still an equity issue for kids in low-income households to have access to the same resources, i.e. the, the credits, just taking the AP courses in general? Is there an equity issue, or does the reimbursement program kind of take care of that issue?
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Alice, to the data question first, please?
Yes, thank you. We are working with SEPI. We continue to work with College Board to collect data for last school year and again for this school year. So if the data is available and it is available in SEPI or through the College Board or any of the other organizations for which we request data, we will be presenting those metrics to you. Absolutely. And then for the question on AP, Mr. Boobney, can you respond to the Dr. Ulbridge's question on AP, questions on AP?
I'd be happy to. Thank you for the question. With regards to the college credit and how that's granted, the test score of a three or higher generally relates to, to credit being granted, however. And in the long run, that's left up to the enrolling college or university. And so they would then make that determination on the student's success and, and, and how that moves forward. So. And then, Dr. Rice, do you want to address the equity?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. So there, there continue to be tremendous equity issues around advanced placement, around advisement, around courses, counseling about courses, prerequisites associated with courses, encouragement to take particular courses. In some cases, resources around the taking of particular courses. That is to say, the encouragement to do work prior to the course. Some of us remember vividly doing work before our AP courses began in order to be successful during the, the AP courses. So there continue to be a number of equity issues, not, not only within the state but across the country when it comes to advanced placement. I will tell you that this is an area that's very, very important to me. In both of my two previous districts, we doubled participation in advanced placement and more than doubled with historically underrepresented populations, economically disadvantaged students, African-American students, Latino students. We can do more in this area. We can do more in the state, and we can do more in the country. And Ms. Alice may recall conversations that we had prior to the pandemic about our plans in this area. And those plans were set aside, given the pandemic. We've not forgotten those. And we intend to make a pretty strong push in this area in next years. In next year with, with our local school districts, there's a an important effort with the College Board that permits you to identify children that will be likely successful in advanced placement courses based on other experiences that they have. And that permits you to have conversations directly, to notify parents, and to have conversations directly with parents without getting involved in some of the implicit biases that may take place with respect to local school districts and local students who may not necessarily be as resourced or as as, as backed up as, as other children who come from the middle class are. Thank you very much for that question or the set of questions, Dr. Ulbridge. Dr. Pritchett, to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this presentation. It's been very thorough. First of all, I want to do a plug for early colleges. Dr. Ulrich and I had the privilege of getting the Early College of Macomb started with lots of help from lots of people at Macomb Community College and Macomb County Superintendent. I had the privilege of attending their graduation this past weekend. And one hundred and eighty-eight graduates. And over the years, Cassandra, you'll be happy to hear this, over two thousand graduates in that program. I put a plug in with high school kids every time I talk to them about they should try an early college program. I just think it's phenomenal for the majority of students in high school, especially juniors. Now, to my questions, CTE, I am wondering, several years ago, there used to be a five-year follow-up questionnaire for CTE, and I'm not even sure it's done anymore with local districts or at the ISD level. So I just wondered if that is done, and if it is, are there results for those, or has that gone by the wayside?
So we do a follow-up on our students now, one year after graduation. Actually, probably, actually, probably one quarter after graduation, because it's actually and we can send you the results of the most recent survey that was done statewide.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then my last question dealt with the slide on number and percent of youth ages sixteen and over with an IEP meeting requirement. Says post-school outcomes are the percent of youth who, first bullet, are no longer in secondary school. I assume that would include students who have dropped out, that did not receive a diploma, or am I making an incorrect assumption here?
We have a cohort approach to how we send out the surveys. And we look at students who, when they've left secondary schools, typically through graduation or they've completed through their secondary transition process. I'm not certain that we include students who drop out. I would have to go back to, we work with Wayne State University to do those surveys and how they determine who receives them. But I'd be happy to find that out and let you know that.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
I'm going to assume not, but I think that's a good question.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Lipton, to you.
Thank you so much. That was a very, very robust presentation. And I do appreciate that. I'd first like to begin with a comment or a plug, if you will. The, the a lot of the, the work in terms of preparation for post-secondary is being done by the fifteen promise zones around the state, many, several of which the department is already a part of through the, through the partnership model. The fifteen promise zones are in some of the most economically distressed communities. And by integrating not just scholarship for a post-secondary credential, but also success coaching and mentoring, the, the ability to see more students succeed both in high school and, and beyond is really very, 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 very heartening. So when you're looking at potential sort of partners or what have you, I would, I would urge the department to look closely at the work that's happening in our promise zones across the state. Having said that, I have two questions, one with respect to early middle college and one with respect to the AP courses. With respect to the early middle college program, can you identify potential barriers that might exist in terms of districts partaking of or envisioning an early middle college program? It strikes me that, in particular this year, a, an early middle college program may be a very, very robust way of dealing with sort of the crisis of the pandemic and being able to have an additional year of schooling at the back end. And envisioning that may very well be a potential way of, of, of dealing with this particular situation that we're in. And I'm just curious to know if you've identified barriers for districts to be able to envision an, an early middle college program in their district. And then the second question, in terms of AP courses, my impression is that the, the offering and the taking of an AP curriculum is very valuable in terms of post-secondary. Well, that, that colleges look upon that favorably for students that are looking to go to a, attain further education. But I'm not sure how many colleges in Michigan actually accept the exam results for actual college credit. And so I'm wondering if the value is more in the the rigor of the, of the AP coursework on a college application and less on the, you know, getting the, getting the additional college credit. At least insofar as my experience with the promise zone students that I work with, and I could be, could be wrong, but not a lot of Michigan colleges and universities actually accept the exam and give college credit. So we may be, I want to make sure we're not, we're not sort of misleading students in terms of the, the advantage of the AP program. So those are, so, so the question is, do, do we know how many colleges actually take the credit? Or conversely, ones that specifically won't take the credit for their students?
Mr. Boobney, do you have that information, or do we need to get that from Ms. Lipton?
I, I would like to do a little bit of digging, and I'll get that for you, Ms. Lipton.
I can just tell you that having worked in the area for a dozen years, I can tell you that our, our kids went across the state, and they benefited from the AP, from the AP credits, from the, the strong scores. We'll get you the specific information. We'll get you the specific information to your question. But I don't think that in any way, shape or form, we're misleading children. Know that there are a variety of benefits. You point out the rigor of AP. That's absolutely true. The AP rigor is something that we would push even if there were no opportunity to get college credit. The other benefit, which a lot of people don't realize is is that while AP is sometimes helpful for students who are going to go to college and know that they're going to go to college. AP is also powerful for children who don't know that they're going to go to college and who experienced an advanced placement course, do well in the advanced placement course, take the test, do well on the test, get college credit and realize, all of a sudden, that they have the opportunity to go to college, that they are capable of going to college. For a lot of first gen students, first generation students, it ends up being epiphanous for them. It ends up being door opening to them irrespective of whether the credits are available at particular institutions. But we will get you the specific answer to your question and we will share that with all board members as well, because it's an important, it is an important question. Relative to early middle college, Dr. Piles, could you weigh in on early middle college barriers?
Yes, we have addressed barriers for early middle colleges. As we discuss those when we're working with new early middle colleges during the application process. And so one of the barriers that exists is the lack of a community college within the geographical region of the school district. And we have 28 community colleges and you're probably keenly aware that they don't cover the entire geography of the state of Michigan. And so some of our private colleges have crafted out credit agreements and helped other schools. For example, Baker College of Cadillac, I know partners with one of our early middle colleges down in southeast Michigan. And so we have models that we share with regions that don't have a college accessible to them. Another issue that arises is a barrier is transportation. Because now we have to get these students to the college for some of their dual enrollment courses. Well, some of the solutions there are that they would offer a a countywide dual enrollment course in a core content area such as Algebra or English 101 at the county technical campus. It wouldn't be CTE specific, but then all the students from all the districts could come in and take that dual enrollment class. And so that way they could ride the bus if they didn't have a bus or a bus going to the college they did. Some of our students who live in more urban environments can use their city bus systems. But a lot of students, by and large, most of our students don't have those or they don't have a vehicle. So that's another strategy that some of the regions employ to assist students with that barrier. Another barrier that comes up are our students who receive lunch assistance. And so the early middle college programs will work out in agreement to provide the student with a lunch at the college during their 13th year when they're on campus for the full time. And so those lunch reimbursement rates aren't terribly generous all the time. But we can strike good deals and we have great partners. And so that's another barrier that we want to overcome. We also look at if a program is not provided within your community college that you that's accessible to you. And then state craft programs of study for students that help them set themselves up for transfer to the institution that offers the degree that they want. And so they can still get started. We all remember a lot of those courses that we took that were very similar across the colleges and universities to help set that the student's trajectory up. And so that's just a few examples of barriers. And then we have best practices that we share with early middle colleges to help them problem solve their barriers during implementation and barriers that may come up during programming in subsequent years.
Thank you very much, Dr. Piles. Ms. Snyder, a question to you.
Yeah, a couple of questions about dual enrollment. Do we have any students in our state that dual enroll out of state?
So who might be able to reflect upon that? I'm not aware of any people that cross states to dual enroll. But Mr. Bougni or Dr. Piles, can you share on that? Ms. Alice?
I'm not aware of any either, Dr. Rice, but we can double check.
Yeah.
We'll confirm our assumption.
Those those state, those state borders tend to be pretty strong when it comes to education programming prior to college. Once you get into college, of course, they're they're no longer, they're no longer as important. But we'll we'll check on that for you.
I think my exploration is is sort of like in response to what we just talked about in terms of transportation and offerings. My understanding is there are lots of different dual enrollment programs around the country that are online and different things that might solve those problems for some students. And I thought a while back, we had talked about at the board table about some students up in the UP that were crossing state lines to dual enroll on some level. So just putting that out there as a as an option and exploring the pathway that we have to do that.
The virtual, the virtual most assuredly is substantially used, not simply in dual enrollment, but but in a whole host of different ways across the state with or without higher education. So that's very, very vibrant. It has become a an important element of the college board that Michigan Virtual and the College Board have partnered on the expansion of AP in Michigan via virtual means for exactly the reason that you are reflecting upon, Ms. Snyder, the geographical remoteness of of some of our young people in their communities. And this is really, we think this has the potential to be an enormous equity initiative to open up advanced placement opportunities for many of our rural children across the state. We think this is a big deal. We think this is a a moment for us in the state is going to really help a lot of children gain access to advanced placement participation and success when previously they didn't have that.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
My staff is texting me during this presentation and we do have early middle college agreements and CTE agreements with out of state.
And and can I ask, is that just specific colleges? Or could a student, say, for example, find something that, again, it's like, hey, I'd like to try this program out? Is that something that we have articulation agreements or a pathway to develop that for them?
So we're having further conversation, from what I understand, about the schools that we've identified. And I know that my early middle college manager, Ms. Lisa Siegel, and Mr. Ryan Soloski from People Accounting have been chatting about this exact conversation. And so we should be able to follow up with some additional information.
That would be great. It just, it just seems to me, after this year especially, that we've we've given students quite a few options in terms of, hey, what works best for you? And what direction are you going in? And so maybe such a thing as an online dual enrollment wouldn't be best for all students, but some. So it's, you know, just just kind of building on what you had talked about, this issue of transportation, issue of offerings. It seems like if that is something that's available to students, that it wouldn't be such an issue. So.
You bet. And I think I think really it turns on the course of study, doesn't it? So you can imagine, for example, taking AP Latin online. Harder to do a welding course of study online. So it really turns on what the young, young person is is studying. Thank you, Ms. Snyder, for for those questions. Dr. Pugh to you.
I think it was Dr. Piles that presented the information related to CTE. And I saw that the numbers declined for African-American students. I don't know if it declined or if it was one of the numbers I'm now that it was early in the in the presentation, but the numbers may have been a one-digit number. As far as the increase, it was one of the lowest numbers. And I I guess my my concern there and my question is, I know we've talked several times about the perception around CTE. And there's been, you know, the longstanding perception because of the past reality that there was tracking that was taking place when it came to a technical and career type coursework. And I'm just wondering what, again, and I think that we've we've talked about this previously, but what are we doing to put those safeguards in place to make sure that that's not happening? To Cassandra's point, especially as we're moving forward post-COVID and we're already talking about worker shortage and, I mean, that that's the big topic now. But how are we making sure that those safeguards are in place? And just as importantly, how are we making sure that the perception around CTE and the opportunities that it can bring to students who are looking to go to college? You know, in addition to maybe from high school to career, but for for students who also want to go from high school to college, that we're making sure that that perception is there, that CTE encompasses all of that and that those safeguards are in place.
So we are working in our data unit on identifying research and have a research brief that we're vetting right now about students of color in current tech ed programs and strategies. And so we're working on trying to find the research and the best practice to help influence our school personnel who actually enroll the students in providing them with the information and resources that this is a viable pathway for all students. In light of this data, we will also share this data with the school districts and have a conversation about them diving deeper into their data and determining why we have some significant increases along with some marginal decreases. Because I think we can learn from all the fluctuations in enrollment.
Okay. And, you know, hopefully we are like looking at those specific populations where we see the stark differences. And I saw, you know, for the Native American, I think it was at the AP enrollment or was it the? Or maybe it was the early, early middle college enrollment. But there were some stark differences that were there. So I would love to get updates on on those populations.
The issue of career and technical education enrollment, participation, and then ultimately completer status is in part a function of how career and technical education is delivered in a given community. Is it done in the local schools or is it done at a freestanding tech center? And if the latter, is that a site that children of color believe is welcoming to them? Wants them to be there, wants them to participate, values their participation and encourages their success? Children watch adults for clues about whether they are welcome in a given space, as you well know. And we we send signals initially. Children make determinations based on those feelings, those signals, those unspoken determinations, if you will. And then particular institutions gain reputations which become difficult to change over a period of time. Programs, institutions develop reputations as being for particular children and not for others. And those, that becomes very, very challenging to to change. I can simply tell you that I have had these conversations repeatedly with individuals who never said that particular children couldn't attend, but did nothing to welcome them and create an environment that was warm for all children and and really paved a way for a broader range of children. So it's a whole lot different from saying there are no impediments, that there are no impediments in your head as an administrator or or otherwise worker in in the field of education is different from there are no impediments in the in the minds of our children. And so I know you, you, you understand, Dr. Pugh, what I'm referring to. This is a, this is a big challenge for us. It goes far beyond the legal. It goes to the interpersonal. It goes to the sociological. It goes to the social psychological. And it requires us to to really rethink particular institutions that have been freestanding for years, ostensibly with open doors for years. But that you have opening doors and that you have open arms are two different things.
And you articulated that very well. And I think, again, compounding that is that you may not have the advocacy from parents or from community members for there to be open doors and open arms because there are people in those communities who feel that these programs in the past have harmed our children. So you get that that compounded reasons and that that may result in the numbers that that we saw in our CTE numbers for for Africans.
That's right. Yeah, that's exactly right. And that that has to get peeled back, community by community. And and so, and it's not simply CTE, although it's very, very pronounced in CTE, absolutely. But it also extends to AP programs in local high schools. It can extend to early middle college programs. Children draw determinations, draw draw conclusions based on very, you know, small pieces of information about whether programs welcome them or not. And then they act on that. And those programs develop a rhythm and a clientele based on those determinations. They may not be the intent of the offerers of those programs at all, but it's rather the effect on the children and the families that that depresses the participation of some groups. So it's something that needs to be worked on very, very hard, very, very carefully. It has to be worked on granularly. That is to say, at the local district level, at the local school level. It sometimes requires some very, very hard conversations about why the regional Career and Technical Education Center doesn't have but 3% or 4% African-American children in a county with 25% African-American students. It requires a RISA superintendent and a RISA Career and Technical Education Center director and the leaders of individual programs to open or reopen their arms to to schools and families. Sometimes you have to have a reboot, if you will, with different, different communities. And you kind of have to say, look, we didn't necessarily get this right. We want another crack at this. So that's very, very important. I'm looking forward to seeing Dr. Piles' research brief and looking forward to being a part of of working on this longstanding issue. Other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from board members? Going once and twice, thrice. That was a very rich presentation for to to all of you. You know what? I think we may have one other answer. Ms. Ring, do you have an answer to Dr. Pritchett's question?
I absolutely do. What we found is that there are 423 students who were surveyed as a part of our cohort under the category of dropout. We typically have a pretty low response rate from that group. About 44 kids responded to the survey. That represents about 5.45% of the total respondents to the survey. And so those those answers are reflected in the data that we reported.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to thank our presenters, Ms. Alice, Dr. Piles, Ms. Rink, Mr. Bogni. That was an outstanding presentation. And it was so good that we feel like we need a dessert after that outstanding meal. And we are going to go to the presentation of our teachers of the year. Mr. Owen Bondano, the 2020 2021 Michigan Teachers' Year will present his report. Mr. Bondano teaches English Language Arts to freshmen in Oak Park Schools. Ms. Liz Honeyset, Region Seven Teacher of the Year is joining us from Portage Public School. She's an art and technology teacher at Portage Central High School. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Teachers of the Year, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm just sharing my slides now. Hopefully they're popping on up. So as you all know by now, my name is Owen Bondano. I'm Michigan Teacher of the Year. I teach ninth grade English at Oak Park High School. And I am joined today by Liz Honeyset, the Region Seven Michigan Teacher of the Year. I'm going to jump right on in because I don't want to take up too much time today. So so today I'd like to sort of zoom in on one of my students for you. I know that the board is familiar with, obviously, the many issues that our students face that make education more challenging. And we know that every student is a unique intersection of all of those different challenges as well as their personal strengths. And the pandemic, of course, has complicated everything we know about education. And I thought my student Kay is an interesting example of all of these intersections. So I'd like you to meet Kay. Kay is currently a sophomore in Oak Park Schools. I teach freshmen, so I had Kay last year, but once my child, always my child. So Kay is very much still one of mine. Because Oak Park Schools are schools of choice, Kay lives in Detroit while attending Oak Park Schools. And Kay is the oldest in their family and spends much of their time looking after their younger siblings. I met Kay, obviously, on their first day of ninth grade, which is always a stressful day for kids, first day of high school, right? And right away, Kay showed me through their body language and their responses to me that they were trying very hard, ironically, to be disengaged and to set the bar that I had for them very low. And a few days into our our school year together, we were doing an activity in class where students have to have short conversations with each other just about who they are as people. And it's a way of practicing polite conversation and a way to get to know each other and build community. And when my students are doing things like that, I love to jump in whenever I can. So that day, my students were having these mini meetings with each other. And at one point, I found myself paired with Kay, who, as I mentioned, had been extremely standoffish to me, extremely disengaged for the first few days of school. And when I got paired with Kay, the question that came up on the board was, what is something about you that someone wouldn't guess just by looking at you? So Kay looked at that question, looked at me, got this look in their eye like, here's where I'm really going to get this guy. Here's where I'm gonna get him to get off my back, right? Kay stuck out their hand like I had taught them and said, hi, my name is Kay and I'm gay. I shook Kay's hand and I said, Kay, it's very nice to meet you. My name is Mr. Bondano and I'm bisexual. I'm pretty sure I heard Kay's jaw hit the floor. And from that moment on, Kay and I were on the same team. You know, I'm not going to say that we didn't experience our fair share of challenges throughout the school year, but we were at least on the same team when those challenges arose. And I have been Kay's cheerleader in every capacity, Kay's advocate when necessary to help make sure that they are successful in school. And this is, Kay has had some negative school experiences in in their past. Sometimes they take a little longer to grasp new concepts. Sometimes focusing is a little bit more difficult for them. They have some anger issues and sometimes they can perceive the way that they are spoken to by adults as being hostile or challenging, even when they're really not. And it makes these anger issues flare up. And all of this has led to feeling sort of left behind academically. They also have learned a pattern of giving up when academics gets hard, which in a teenager is a very hard habit to break. Additionally, they have experienced some bullying, some for their size, some for their queerness, some for a number of other things. And so all of these make school a place that Kay doesn't necessarily have a lot of positive associations going on with. And beyond the school setting, of course, Kay faces a number of intersectional challenges in their life. They face LGBTQ plus discrimination. You know, this is a child who at the beginning of the school year told me they were never going to tell their mother about their sexual orientation because they were afraid of getting kicked out of the house. Just so nobody's worried that didn't happen, Kay is fine. But it was a worry and a concern that they had. Kay has experienced racism, of course, because we live in a racist society. But specific things like this past summer, Kay got their first job at a fast food restaurant. We were so excited, we celebrated having a job. We talked about what that meant for responsibility and all sorts of things. And about a month later, Kay sent me a message that they had quit their job. And I I asked what happened. It's been like three and a half weeks. What went on? And Kay told me that their manager had been making racist comments to them since day one and that Kay had been trying really hard to keep all those the feelings they were having about that inside and just do the job and get the paycheck and do what needed to be done. But finally, they couldn't take it anymore, all these little comments they were getting, and they blew up at the manager and quit on the spot. So that's another intersectional challenge that this child faces that compounds all the other challenges they already already face. Kay does not comes from a low socioeconomic background, has dealt with food insecurity, has a parent with chronic health problems, which often, you know, I know many people who are older siblings look after younger siblings. But in many ways, Kay's had to parent younger siblings in ways that some of us haven't had to deal with because their parent is often not able to do those things for health reasons. And this has taught Kay also that Kay is kind of an adult already, which provides a whole another host of issues at school. As far as the pandemic, I knew as soon as we went virtual that this is something that Kay would struggle with. Kay would often find success because I could come back to their desk every five minutes and say, hey, what are you doing? What's the next step? Let's keep it moving. Kay needs that face to face interaction and needs to be pushed by the adults in their lives to succeed. So I knew that virtual was going to be a struggle as well as the additional struggles of does Kay have access to a device? Does Kay have access to the internet? Does Kay know how to use all of those things, et cetera, that were mentioned in an earlier presentation today? So when Kay was still my student in the spring, I really stayed on them about finishing ninth grade strong, making sure they got all their credits, making sure they were taking care of business. But I knew 10th grade, when we went into it virtually, was also going to be a struggle for them. And pretty early in the school year, Kay's anger issues manifested in a blow up argument over Zoom with a teacher. And it was decided that Kay would finish their sophomore year at our alternative facility. When I heard that, I got very worried for Kay because Kay has struggled a lot with feeling on the edge of giving up on education altogether. You know, we've had many conversations where Kay says, I'm just ready to drop out. This isn't for me. All of those negative experiences have compounded to make it so that they don't want to continue in school. And so when I heard that they were going to the alternative school, I got very worried that this would spur them down that path, perhaps, instead of towards graduation. Now luckily, Kay is the picture of resilience. Kay has done really well in the alternate setting. Little bit, some of us have stayed on their tail, but mostly on their own. Their GPA is really bouncing back to the A and B range. They're on track to get all their credits for the second year of high school in a row. Kay is also growing into leadership roles when they were a ninth grader. See, the picture here is both Kay and Kay's best friend. The two of them became the co-founders of the Ninth Grade Queer Straight Alliance in my building. And they became leaders for their peers in that way. Just the other day, I was I was talking to Kay about their college plans. They're starting to narrow down what kinds of schools might be a good fit for them in the future because Kay wants to be an entrepreneur, wants to own their own business. And they know that a business degree or a degree in general is really going to be helpful to them in their future plans. Kay really is a great example of rising above some of the challenges that they have faced in school. Now, in part, Kay has had some great advocates to help them get there. Teachers and other professionals, parents, community members that have been in their corner really helping them to fight. And they have a strong sense of self-worth. And we know that that helps people push past the barriers in their lives. However, Kay has not yet reached the finish line. This is the end of sophomore year for them. So there's no guarantee that Kay is going to make it there in two years. We know that Kay's school experiences are a window to the way that many students struggle and how they face barriers in our school system. So that's why I wanted to present to you today, this this wonderful student who I love very much and who I think makes a perfect example of both the ways that we succeed with students and the ways that we need to do better by students. So on that note, I would like to hand the mic over to the Region Seven Michigan Teacher of the Year, Liz Honeyset, an incredible art teacher, and she will tell you about herself and her practice.
Hi, thank you so much. Thanks, Owen. I always enjoy being able to see all the personal stories and connections you have with students. It's really inspiring and it's been amazing throughout the course of this year to be able to experience those things one on one with you. Board members, thank you so much for your time today. I know it's valuable. And so I'm just going to spend a little bit of time introducing you to me and trying to give you a sense of what is important in the world of education through the lens of myself and my students. So first of all, I just want to introduce you to my family. I think that's what I have first, right, Owen? It is. And that's my family. And I the picture on the left was actually taken during quarantine. I have a good friend who is a photographer and she went around and she did porch pictures of families during the first part of our lockdown. And she stayed more than six feet away. And I'm extremely lucky to have a partner who has a background in education on the peripheral. Both his parents are English teachers and his brother works for the Federal Department of Education. And so the support that I have gotten from him throughout my entire career as an educator is nothing short of miraculous. And together, we are raising a very spunky, very theatrical, very creative young woman who just turned seven on Friday. She is a student in a Montessori school, which through Calm and Public Schools, where she is online this year, but has still maintained for herself this can do, self-driven, very motivated to learn environment. And every day I come home to some sort of new discovery. Sometimes it's a text in the middle of the day of what I have to bring home to make to do an experiment. So usually that's what happens. So those are the people that I surround myself with. And then outside of my family life, this is my teacher life. And I I try to keep it a secret. And I tell the students not to tell anyone that I have the greatest job in the school and not to let it get out. But I do. And it ranges in in terms of what students are able to do and how students are able to do it. But the thing that is consistent, whether I'm teaching a ceramics and sculpture class, a jewelry class, or the newest class that I have been tasked with creating, which is our Technology, Engineering and Creativity Class, the goal is for self-sufficiency. My my level of interaction with students starts off with tons and tons of routines and procedures and all of the stuff that we think is boring and awful. And because of that, it becomes a classroom where student choice, student voice, student autonomy and student leadership is at the heart of everything that we do. Students in the in the pictures on the the very top right, you can see students that are doing a community event where after showing their jewelry in an exhibition, they also taught others how to make different jewelry techniques. One of my students on the left, just to the left of that picture, received an award for her for her art making. Students on the on the bottom are celebrating a really creative experience working with a gas kiln and firing raccoon pottery, which is something I never even experienced until college. So it's pretty amazing. And then one of my students on the right is a special needs student who in most other areas of school is not necessarily what one would consider successful. And in the art studio, they are able to make gains of epic proportions. On the left hand side then is the my what I would consider my baby right now. And that is our Technology, Engineering and Creativity Class. The way that I could best describe it would be a hands-on class where students can learn not only how to act and think creatively, but also to come up with creative solutions to real world problems. This year, we explore, we were remote for the first part of the year. And so as one of our our choice units, we actually designed and created prototypes and some even created things to fruition, solutions to and responses to the current COVID-19 pandemic. The things that people invented ranged from eye drops that you could put in your eyes to continue on your Zoom meetings and watching Netflix to a book of comics responding to and showing how people recovered from the pandemic itself to a prototype of something that you could wear on your body to ensure that people always stand six feet away. Everything was done to the fullest extent of every student's ability and it encourages people to believe in themselves. And that's, to me, that's really what education is all about. In addition to teaching, I can't remember what I have next. There it is. The my other big passion in life is theater and creating theatrical experiences for students. I was fortunate to be a student of the arts from a very young age and was practically raised in the theater, which I'm now doing to my daughter. Apologies, but I think she's going to be okay. I, in fact, met my husband on the stage of Portage Northern High School. And so our theatrical life together has been working with the students at Portage Central High School. We, as as the production manager, I am responsible for working with all of the parents and students behind the scenes as well as coordinating with different artists and different people who are on doing the designs or the props or the lighting and making sure every aspect of it works well together. But we are an educational theater program. Students participate in every aspect of a show from start to finish. And then in the end, I'm really left with one task, which is the bottom right hand corner. I get to paint the floor. Everything else is done by and for and with students and their parents. And I can confidently say that when our students leave our program, they are permanently changed. Their level of responsibility, passion, compassion, real world skills, it it just can't be repeated anywhere else. It can't be duplicated in the classroom. This is, and even in a pandemic, we did a show outside, which was our town. And we did a show in person, fully masked the entire time. And we streamed it. It was filmed, a lot like Hamilton was filmed for for the show year in town. And so those are three of our my proudest moments in theater pandemic history. And I think these are the other the other things that I'm passionate about, and that is professional development. I have been fortunate enough through grants to be able to attend incredible professional development. And from there, the goal is to give back. I worked with I've worked with art teachers from across the country and have created and maintained friendships with them where we are constantly reviving, revising and adapting our curriculum to best meet the needs of not just one type, but all types of students. The Design Thinking Workshop at Stanford D School is an incredible opportunity to think of design as human centered, where we start first and foremost with radical empathy. And that phrase changed my life. Radical empathy. And looking at the world through a lens not like your own. And from there, being able to design things and spaces and experiences that truly make the world a better place, that is the entire goal of that program. So it's been my mission to continue to educate myself and to then share that those experiences with other colleagues to create a world of education where students are empowered to make radical dynamic change. And I think the last part of my puzzle is food and running. Every day, to start my class, I do a poll with my students because some of us are virtual and some of us are in person at the same time. It's a high flex teaching situation. And every day, to get things going, I start with a poll about food or something else random, but mostly food. And the students know they're to the point now where many of them where many of them email me pictures of their dinners from the night before to show me the kimchi that they made. Or someone's mom is in culinary school and they are learning how to do, they're learning how to do different types of noodles and sauces. And so we tend to trade emails back and forth of food pictures. Just another level of connection between people that maybe don't have anyone else to take an interest in their lives and in what's going on. So that's me and my world. I want to say, on a truly personal note, that I don't think I can love a career more than this. This is the most important job, I think, in the world. And I'm grateful every day for the license and the opportunity to be with these young people. And thank you for the support that you give us to be able to do our jobs to the best of our ability.
I want to thank both Mr. Bondano and Ms. Honeyset for those terrific presentations. Thank you for sharing a little bit about your relationship with Kay. Mr. Bondano, it was very revealing for a number of our listeners. We appreciate that. And Ms. Honeyset, we appreciate that your spunky daughter is at Northglade Montessori School. I've heard a little bit about that school. And it's a good place to be spunky and to be independent. The Portage Theater is very, very, very well-known and very well-respected, and rightly so. So thank you for sharing some of those experiences with us as well. We appreciate that. So President Albridge has said, that was very nice. Thank you. Ms. Lipton has indicated wonderful presentations, very inspiring. Any other comments or carings to share? Dr. Pugh has said, definitely dessert. And for those of us who like dessert, that's high praise. That's sweet praise. Going once and twice and thrice. Okay. And Dr. Pritchett said, Kay and all of your students are lucky to have you as their teacher. And I think that the same is true for the students of Ms. Honeyset and all of our Teachers of the Year. It's been a difficult year to be a student, a difficult year to be a teacher. And people have hung tough through May. We're going to get through this, we're going to get through this year. And we'll have built some resilience skills in the process as well and helped our young people do so as well. They'll draw on this year in a variety of ways through their entire lives. Thank you very much for your leadership. We appreciate you. Have a great day, board. It is 12:06, and we are going to reconvene at the stroke of 1:00 p.m. Have a good lunch. Thank you. Bye-bye.